Okay, guys, we're going to call our work session, our city council work session to order here on Thursday, March 21st, 2024. We're a little bit behind, I apologize. We've been scrambling today, so bear with us. First on the agenda is a discussion of our utility bank financial or financing with RFP results by Kim Creach. Y'all should have, Jack, you should have a sheet with the bank statements. Yep, yep.
So you should have a packet, I want to make sure y'all have your packet. And so I have here Marcy Lewis that is with PFM. And then, so we can be able to go through if there's any specifics to this, but it was put out, 25 banks was, the RFP was sent to, and the response was 11 banks. And, you know, going through these rates, ends up being one of the best rate that we can determine is that Webster Bank at a rate of 410, and that is going to be at a fits rate. I don't know if you want us to go through all these, or are you going to have Marcy come up here and?
Well, I had a couple, I had one quick question for you.
If we'll be able to go through if there's any.
How'd you live there somehow? Jeff?
I thought I was having a stroke.
No. You went to live. Kim, I'm sorry.
Yes.
The 4.1% fixed, is there a penalty for early termination? Can we refinance that at any time?
So on the fixed rate, 4.1% is what we had asked for on that fixed rate option was prepayable anytime after 18 months.
18 months, okay.
So it's a two-year, 24-month term, so you'll have between, when you get to 18 months, between there and the 24 months to refinance or pay off. Give you a little cushion to get through those six months and decide how you want to handle it.
So you can only refinance between 18 and 24 months? After 24 months, you can't refinance this?
Well, after 24 months, it's due, so you'll have to refinance.
Oh, you have to, okay.
Yeah, you'll have to refinance or pay it off.
Two-year. You said two-year, I wrote down 10, you said two-year, I'm sorry.
Oh, two, yeah.
That makes a lot of sense.
It's a two-year facility.
Okay. All right, good, okay.
The variable rate options are prepayable anytime, but those are substantially higher rates.
Right.
Yeah, so it's in here. Option two is what they gave us, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, and if you look down on the second page of that, it's right there, Councilman Burrell.
Well, is it, you said an option two, so is it interest only we're paying on that for two?
Correct, for two years. You can pay principal.
We can pay, we have the option to pay principal if we want.
Well, no, wait.
So this says.
You can pay, you pay interest only for two years, and then in 18 months, you can pay principal.
Yeah, starting at 18 months is when we can be able to pay.
So interest only at 4.1%, and after 18 months, we can start paying on principal.
Yeah, but we have to get the full amount, we can't just draw that down?
Correct, that's correct. It's fully funded at closing, and then you'll be able to take those funds and invest them.
Well, we can, yeah, we, I think, and Kim, well, we, that's going to be a push pretty much, is that correct?
Yes, I think.
We're a little bit of, what's our?
We're going to use this money within six months because of the projects that are already been let out in the works. This money in six months, we will have it spent.
Okay. So you ran the numbers, so if you had a higher rate and you were drawing it down over six months, it's, we'd come out better with the 4.10?
I think so.
You think so?
Well, yes, yes, sir.
We don't know so?
Yes, sir. Because we can turn around and invest that compared to the other rates that you have.
That was the question we had had before?
Yeah, that's what I was asking.
Right.
Okay. As long as we can do that, then we're covered.
Yeah, the draw loans, at a six-month draw period, but they had substantially higher rates. So assuming you're going to draw it all in six months anyway, just drawing it all at once and investing it while you're using, you know, until you use it.
Well, you know what happens a lot is we think we're on a go, and then something gets pushed to the right six months, and then we're sitting there and we've borrowed $25 million in interest only, and we're not able to use it. So if we can invest that, the differences, then we'll be fine.
That's exactly right.
We very borrowed from general fund a million dollars. So as bills come in, I just have, to be able to fund the AP for this week, the checks that go out Friday is another million dollars.
Yeah, and we passed that ordinance for those monies to flow like that about two months ago, coming from the general fund, just for public purposes. Councilman Boone, you good?
Good.
All right. Yeah, and the other option was a truist, not to go through all, but just the closest, let's just kind of pontificate a little bit here, at 3.92. But it had terms that were not beneficial to us. I think it was not prepayable prior to maturity, and it was only a 18-month term, and we could not prepay it off, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That's correct. So basically, you're getting an extra six months.
Right.
To decide when you want to prepay and how much, you know, if you want to refinance some of it, pay off some of it, it's just, the Webster gives you that six-month cushion.
Yeah. Yeah, Kim, you did a good job here. And PFM, yes ma'am, we appreciate y'all.
Yeah.
Vetting this for us and getting us this deal here.
Yeah, and I have bond counsel here also, if you have any questions, you know, I know there were some questions about PNC, and he can explain if there's any questions about, there were some additional, what I call strings attached to that money, if there was any questions on that, so you have your bond counsel here too.
Yep, well, yeah, PNC had a lot of strings, if I remember correctly, I don't think it's on here, is it on here? It's on my other sheet here. Let's see. They had a sulfur that was 79%.
Why is looking that up? What's the, what are the fees associated with this? I don't, I don't see any.
There's no.
A couple of the banks had fees for bank counsel.
This one had none.
The Webster Bank.
Webster has none.
This one has none.
Webster has none.
Yeah, like the one I was just speaking of, which truist was the closest, had a 7,500, almost $8,000 fee, just up front.
Okay, that's actual, okay. I didn't see any, I just was wondering if I was missing anything or not.
No, they specifically put in their proposal, there would be no fees.
Yeah. And I guess, do we have a full write-up with the wordings of what we're getting from Webster? Did anybody go that far yet, or, I mean, I see a simplification here, but is there something as far as the terms and all that showing that there is no fees, showing that these terms are, we'll have all that, correct?
Yes, we have, that was in their proposal. And we have, we have that, Kim has that too, but I brought one with me.
Because it doesn't, on ours, it says nothing.
Right.
Like, so, you know, nothing is nothing.
Right.
So that could go that way or that way. So that's why we're asking so many questions, because we're not trying to get ninjaed here. Okay, all right. Councilman Burrell, are you, you have any questions for bond counsel?
No, no, I just, man, I hate borrowing money. $2 million in interest over two years, that's a lot, that's why you need to be out of debt.
Curse of growing so fast.
It's a good rate, I will say.
It's a great rate.
It's a very good rate right now.
The most important thing about borrowing money is, do you have a plan on paying it back, and does it take away from any other parts of your business, and it does not? So we're, I think we're being financially, I think we're doing the right thing, I think we're doing the right thing on this particular thing. Water and wastewater just don't make, it's hard for us to pay the bills when the money is not coming in instead of going out, so we got to have cash flow, and that's the biggest thing to keep this machine rolling. All right, you want to say anything about PNC and anything about that situation?
I'm happy to address any questions you have about it, any questions the council has about it, but I think.
So if the public was looking at it, PNC would have had a 4.04 1% loan or option with a fixed rate, but they also had a indicative rate of 4.88% with a fee of $7,500. But I think the biggest thing was a lot of the things that they had coming with it.
That's right.
Yeah, you had to pay a prepayment penalty prior to maturity, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And I'd say, I'd say that's the biggest issue.
That was the biggest issue, right.
And not only is it a penalty, it's an unknown penalty.
Right.
Should, in this, what I describe as a somewhat volatile interest rate situation, interest rates may be going down over the next two years, nobody really knows.
Nobody.
A prepayment penalty can become quite expensive.
That's right.
Particularly an unknown prepayment penalty, and so the sort of headline rate from Webster Bank of 4.10, very clean proposal, no strings attached.
Right.
No prepayment penalty versus the 4.04 from PNC, which was not locked, so it may not be 4.04 today, it might be actually higher than 4.1.
And that's the key word, it was not locked.
But even, assuming it is locked at 4.04, that prepayment penalty and this council's desire to preserve flexibility to prepay potentially between the 18 and 24-month marks could make that a very costly provision, in addition to a few other provisions in their term sheet that were not exactly in conformity with the RFP.
Very good. So I guess in your professional opinion, we're making the right decision?
If the council determines to choose this Webster Bank proposal, I think that would be a very wise choice.
Very wise choice, very good, very good.
I can see their new news release now, spanning the east coast from New York to Massachusetts and Alabama.
Yeah. All right, guys, well, thank you guys so much for everything that you have done. All right.
Thank you.
Kim, you have anything else, my love? All right, very good. All right, committee updates. Councilman Burrell?
No, hadn't had any committee meetings since the last meeting, what's it been? Five days?
Yeah. Yeah, we, I think we were going for the airport, we were in DC for that one. Councilman Boone?
Nothing or port.
Have anything? All right, well, I did attend the recreation, rec board meeting yesterday, and they're moving right along, trying to pull together our five-year plan as far as their recommendations, as far as the direction we're going with our recreation, and our recreation is blowing up, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, we are, we're hanging on to catch up with it if it's not already ahead of us, which it is. But we, we had some good conversations, we need, if anybody is interested in applying, we have two resigned, and we need two more rec board, if y'all know anybody out there that fits that, we need two more to represent on that board. That's right, is that right, Pat, two?
Yes.
Yeah, two more. You know, I think they're about to get started on our golf course, I think that went out on our website as far as the sidewalk is concerned, and the drainage for the back nine holes, and I think we will keep you guys, the public, updated on those situations as they come to fruition. Other than that, we had an enormous number of kids that signed up for our flag football team, which shows us how much we're growing, I think it was almost 200 kids that signed up for our flag football, and that's extrapolating, is a good word for that. So our recreation is healthy, you know, Pat and that group works hard, and we're going to continue to move our recreation forward here, it's important for our city. That's all I have as far as committee updates. All right, let's go, guys, department head updates, let's get at it.
This morning, I met with the personnel board and presented the handbook, hopefully for the last time to them, so that's going to be reviewed by our employment attorneys starting tomorrow, so I'm really hopeful to get that on an agenda, work session agenda in the month of April, for y'all to start reviewing that, so you should hear from me soon.
Say that at the beginning again, Hannah, I apologize.
No, that's okay, the employee handbook.
Okay, yes.
Was reviewed by the personnel board this morning.
Okay.
So you should hear from me in the next couple of weeks on starting to review that and getting it on an agenda.
Okay.
And then I have number 11 on the agenda for this evening. The city council approves and adopts recommendation of the personnel board for the reclassification of our code enforcement officer, which currently requires an Apost certification and is assigned to a grade eight. We are requesting to remove the Apost certification and reclassify the position to a grade seven. It will still report to the revenue manager.
Who do they report to right now?
So this is a newly funded position with its budget year, so it hasn't been filled yet, so it will report to the revenue manager.
So this is.
We've also got code enforcement and planning, but they've got a different set of duties. They're in the same grade though, or they will be.
So we're just decreasing the criteria?
Correct.
Lowering the criteria so that we can try, okay, and then we just drop the grade? Okay, very good.
Yes.
Understood, understood. Any questions, council? It's pretty straightforward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Hey, Wes.
Got number 19, it's the purchase of our GPL odorizer, it's a, basically, it's the device that injects them our capten and odorizes our gas system, so ours is a couple of million cycles past where we feel like we can maintain it, so we're, it's, we have found that it's cheaper to replace it than it is to keep it up. It's a budgeted issue that we were somewhat expecting, so pretty straightforward here, just number 19.
Yeah.
Is it within budget?
Trying to get all that. Go ahead, Wes.
It is, yes, sir.
It was.
$10,000 below, but.
It's actually, yeah.
I see it now.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great.
Actually, it's within budget, because I can't keep up with all that. But yes, Wes, so, yeah, that's a good product. So this one here is environmental friendly, right?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's not necessarily, it's just an injector, it's all it's doing, it's just injecting them or capten in the system so that it's odorized.
Right.
And we meet a federal regulation for odorization.
Right, but sometimes I was reading about it, the gases leak sometimes, and if it does leak out or whatever, puff puff, it doesn't do it, but it's friendly, it doesn't have any other gases involved.
There's safety measures built into it to regulate exposure outside of the pipeline.
There you go, yeah, which is always good.
It is good, yes, sir.
We always like that. All right, bud, God bless you. Thank you, Wes.
Thank you.
I can speak a little bit on number seven, that's a housekeeping item, I will tell you funny, two funny stories. As you know, you have funded the design of the nature center to convert the old Dias Homestead to part of Flying Creek Nature Preserve. As we were sitting down with the architects and our building department doing code compliance review, our building official says, wait a minute, that's in Baldwin County, you're going to have to go see them and get your permits through them. So that's one issue why that property needs to be annexed in. As you may or may not know, we now have on staff our park ranger, Urban Forester, and he has been very active out there, and we had the Student Conservation Association removing invasive species, and so we've had some veg shaved debris to haul out of there, and he asked me, what should I do with this old Baldwin County garbage cart? And I said, well, call Baldwin County, say you'll set it out by the road, and they can come pick it up. And when he called the customer service, they said, well, who's picking up the garbage now? And he says, we are. And he said, well, that's a violation of the agreement between the City of Fairhope and Baldwin County Solid Waste, y'all can't pick garbage up outside your city limits. So in order to keep us all in good graces with Baldwin County, we do encourage to annex that piece of property as well as the Colony Nature Park.
No good deed goes out.
Since they are city facilities and we are violating, apparently it agreed upon, solid waste agreement, not to service customers outside our city limits, even if it is ourselves. So I ask you to please consider that, as well as those other parcels that Lisa and Hunter worked so hard to get round up. Also, item number 13 is.
Can we go by, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Richard, so the multiple contiguous parcels, are they all adjacent to the home there? I'm trying to look at the map here, I don't.
No, they're different.
No, sir.
They're all in different areas.
The two I really spoke to are the Colony Nature Park, that's the one I put to Lisa as well as the Dias Home. Hunter says, well, if we're going to be doing this, there's some other stranglers that we need to get picked up.
They're unique things, some things like during a subdivision, a lot's created for a lift station, didn't annex in because the subdivision didn't annex in, so it's just cleaned up.
But the big tract of land, though, has been in the city.
That's on Twin Beach, right?
Well, the only big tract was.
Twin Beach.
The nature preserve.
No, the preserve.
Or Boy Scout, adjacent to the Boy Scout.
Yeah, the Colony, yeah, nature park, so.
That was, that.
Oh, that's included in it as well?
Yes. We haven't annexed it into the city in all the years we've been maintaining it, so those are the only two big ones, the rest are just kind of smaller pieces to, while we're at this.
One, two.
It's just a good housekeeping item to do, and I thought that was funny, that the Baldwin County Solid Waste got upset that we were servicing customers outside the city limits, so.
Did you tell them we wouldn't send them a bill?
They can send one, we're not paying it.
I'll send it to my son and him one.
Also, item number 13 is award a bid to Blade Construction for the North Ingleside Drainage. You know, we did some emergency repairs to that about a year and a half ago and got the design for it, and our emergency repairs held up pretty good, well, they started failing again, and it's even gotten worse. It is over the line item budget in that GL code for drainage, but George and I have spoken, and we have two additional $75,000 projects, and we're not going to be able to get to all those, so we are going to, you know, it'll stay in that same GL, but either line 40 or line 70 will be moved over to cover the difference, so that will, that will be handled. Great bid response, we got six bidders, so we know that we got a good, and Blade has done quite a few drainage projects for us, so we do recommend awarding that bid. Also, Darrell and I have a request of council, and hopefully you've seen that, not to get too deep into the story, but under Fly Creek that services that northeast part of the city, the original line is an eight inch, and then at some point in time, there was a parallel 12-inch line installed to help with the total thing. Our staff with water determined, we had a water leak when we were discharging water into Fly Creek, not a real big environmental issue, but that is considered illicit discharge, so the response to that, they had to isolate that pipe, that means that 12-inch line is not carrying any water. Right now, based upon wintertime demands, we're okay, but our biggest concern is, as soon as the warmer months get here, which is not far away, and there's demand not only for irrigation, but also making sure we're keeping up with proper fly flow, we've got to resolve that problem and get that line back live. Originally, we started down the path trying to force account and use our own call, WR Mitchell, and looked at options of possibly doing aerial associated with the bridge structure that we own there, and there's been some change in the bid loss, and we ran afoul of those changes, and it was Marcus and Kim says, no, I don't think you can do it that way, you're going to have to put it out as a standalone bid. So in order to do that, we're asking for y'all to walk on tonight, an approval of the selection of Krebs, as well as authorize the mayor to go ahead and execute the contracts so we can cut them loose, and with us coming back to you the next meeting with the not to exceed, and I did at least verify that this contract would be sub 50K and hopefully substantially lower than that, but they are teed up and ready to go to work tomorrow morning if you consent to that request, and I did put on the memo, they're going to, they're going to set the bid up for three options to hopefully get us the best value, and that is, of course, a complete replacement from south of the woodlands to north of Fly Creek, just the replacement of the segment of pipe under Fly Creek, and also looking at the option to go aerial and not have to bore it, and use the bridge structure with a ductile iron pipe, and whichever we get the best value that gets us the quickest solution to the problem, we'll be back with a bid to you to review and approve.
Well, this is, if they put a new bridge there, which we've applied for a grant.
This is the pedestrian bridge, not the highway bridge.
The pedestrian bridge.
If you recall, they overbuilt that way, and that's good that they overbuilt it because people drive cop cars across it.
Oh, it's a beautiful pedestrian bridge.
But it has two substantial concrete abutments on each side that have the capacity to have brackets, and of course, the nice thing about ductile iron pipe, a 12-inch, it's self-spanning, so hopefully we'll be able to put a new aerial line there that would not actually be supported by the bridge, it'd be supported by the bridge's foundation, so, and that simplifies things for us because you can see your pipe if you need to maintain it, you can get to it, and it's probably cheaper than a long bore, so.
And so we're going from a six to a 12?
No, right now, what, right now, in the ground, under the creek, there's an eight and a 12.
Eight.
The 12 has failed.
Yeah.
So we're at least going to go back with a 12, but they're going to evaluate this, hey, if it's better to go size up.
That's right.
There's really no cost difference other than a little bit of material, so.
You know, I'm not an engineer, but I've been here for the last, and we've had this in my first comings where they, y'all, past administration, it just went up on something and they come right back up and say, we need to go up on that pipe again, you know, so we can hold something larger.
Yeah, but you also remember the scrubbing aspect of that pipe, you don't want it running at 50% flow, because then you get the buildup, you've got to have the scrubbing.
Yeah, for velocity.
Councilman Boone.
For sewer, that is, not for water.
Oh, not for water.
So for water, you want.
Water's full capacity with pressure.
Yeah, you want velocity, so, you know, hey, it's better than doing it again.
The nice thing, as you know, Krebs is already doing the water modeling for the whole system, so that's the first thing they've said, that they would run the numbers and make sure that if there's an opportunity for a low-cost upsizing to make sure that we have the capacity there, they would do that as part of this design.
Counsel, I don't have a problem with walking this on tonight, I think it's exigency, it's a true exigent situation, so.
Let me ask you this, when you said that they would be ready to start tomorrow, did you mean that literally?
Yes.
To start tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, well, if you're authorizing the mayor to execute this, is she available to execute this, that you need to authorize council, we can authorize council president to execute it, we have to?
You know, and I know, we talked with Krebs this afternoon and let them know where we were in this process and that we were hoping for a positive outcome, you know, I am comfortable that if we have a verbal, then Erin and her crew takes the paperwork and does the normal thing, so, you know, we're going, it's going to take a week before we have signed or executed contracts to bring back to you for final approval, so I don't have a problem with a verbal, knowing that there's official council action that has approved that action, so, and, you know, if the mayor approves it by email saying, go ahead and tell them to go, then we can, the paperwork will catch up with it, so, and, you know, I don't, I don't foresee any big issue with that.
Yeah, I can call Caleb as well and talk to him.
But you do have, we do have authority to, we can.
Yeah, I can call Caleb, yeah, yeah.
I don't think he wants to do it.
No, it's all good, I think, but what he's saying is we have time, you know, but I can call Caleb, I know Caleb.
Well, and if you would like to say, council president, what we'll have is, we'll have a.
I just think to have a hiccup, you know?
A proposal that says they know they have to provide full insurance and everything else, and we just sign that as an acknowledgement with the contract to follow, so we can do that.
Well, if you're confident, then I'm confident, I just want to ask the question, if they really meant tomorrow, would that.
If they really meant tomorrow, would that-
I don't think he really means tomorrow.
No, if y'all say yes tonight, they're gonna tell the surveyors to be there tomorrow so that we can get the locates and all that done, so we can-
So we'll start the process, but we still don't know the numbers. We have to negotiate the numbers.
That is correct. They're working on the numbers right now.
And they're in process.
So she'll have time to-
They'll have them in the morning. They know the number.
They know the number. Yeah. So I could, I mean, yeah, I could sign. That's not a problem. Okay, do y'all mind walking this on?
I do not.
And just a couple of updates. Council President Martin alluded to it. We had the pre-construction for cart path paving at Quell Creek. It was kind of mutually decided that they're gonna start the Monday following the FIF tournament. We just did not want to start repairs when that's kind of a signature event for our community and I know all y'all are there. But the good news is we've already walked the back nine with the contractor. I think we're gonna achieve 100% of our goals within the budget that y'all allowed. So I think we're in good shape, excited about that. We held the pre-construction meeting for County Road 13 resurfacing from Morphe to the South City Limits. And again, that notice proceed is being issued and they're planning to start the first week of April. And we're waiting the contracts to come back on the Pine Street one-way conversion. So hopefully, we'll hold that pre-construction early next week and that will be starting in that same time. And we just got all the final documents and drawings completed for the resurfacing of Section Street in the Central Business District. And that will go to advertisement. Flying Creek Nature Preserve, first, the pedestrian tunnel project is already under advertisement. And the main park with all the trails and the bathrooms and pavilions, that starts on Friday. So we're, y'all are gonna be seeing a lot of us and we're excited about it. So thank y'all for all your support.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Richard.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to thank Richard for all his work on that, getting that together today and getting it to you guys so we can get this processed. So thank you, Richard.
My other brother, Darrell. How you doing, Darrell?
Good. How you doing?
Doing well, sir.
All right, I've got item number 20, to award consolidated pipe to provide the pipe valves and fittings to get water from well 13 into treatment plant number three. It is a budgeted item. We had four bids. We went through the whole bid process and all four bids were extremely close. So it was very competitive and that's good.
I mean, I'm gonna tell you, man, I really appreciate the bidding process. And as you can see, it's working. I mean, that's the whole gist of it. It does work. When you get multiple, more than one bid, it pushes the prices down. So God bless you, Erin Wolf and that team and you guys. Thank y'all, seriously. I know it's a pain in the butt, trust me.
No, it's okay. You know, that's, it's the right thing to do and that's how you get the best price.
Yes, so I really appreciate that and so does our city constituents, so. Very good.
And that's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, counsel? It's just, this is just fittings. This is operations on the valves and fittings. And this is well number 13, right? Treatment Plant Three?
Correct. So that's the brand-new well on that church property that the city acquired. So they're, they're gonna be back at work on first thing Monday morning, setting the well screens. And they're moving really fast on this and we're trying to get that water to Treatment Plant Three as fast as possible.
Very good. Very good. How much volume we getting out of that thing?
We don't, we don't know yet. As soon as the screens are set, we'll start testing and we'll, we can keep you updated if you like.
Okay, okay. Very good. Very good. Thank you, Darrell.
All right, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, Lex Department's got agenda item number 21 and it's what we went over during budget year. So this is the right-of-way clearing for our whole system, coming from each substation, going out each breaker all the way to down to single face taps. The only thing is not in the second years.
Which agenda item?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yeah.
Yes, sir. We had several bid responses, seven, and it ranged from one number to a very low number. So, like I said, this is, it can be a three-year contract, not to exceed.
Yeah, so Ben, just to clarify, you know, it's a three-year contract, but each year we necessarily will not have to spend the $461,000.
That's right, yeah.
Six hundred and fifty. We could, because it's a budgeted item, but we do not have to. And whatever we do, the amount of work we do would be the cost.
That's right. So it's broke down in circuits.
Yep.
So we got circuit costs and then we went out and did a, we give them hourly cost too, just in case.
So they do, they have a circuit, they have a limb fee as well.
Yes, sir.
Which I was like, wow. So one of those limbs is $2,400. That's one limb.
That's a big limb.
That's a big limb, though. It was bigger than 20 inches.
They wouldn't be cutting that.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we're just, we're worried about trimming our lines, getting our clearance for-
All right.
Like 10 foot, 10 foot on distribution, 15 on the 46.
I got a question then. On the 461, that's the annual price. It's a three-year contract.
We can do up to a three-year.
Up to 461, but we're committed for three years, up to 461 annual.
We can actually pick and choose which circuits we want.
Right. That's why I was talking, that's why I wanted to talk about it because it's kind of confounding. It really is. The way it's written, and so I wanted to kind of, kind of talk about it, banter a little bit because, so.
My understanding of the 461, that's the entire system?
That's the entire system, yes, sir.
That's seven, that's six plants.
That's great. But then I saw, are we cutting the entire system every single year?
That's the point I'm trying to make, counsel.
Perfect world, you'd do a five-year cut.
You'd do a what?
A five-year cut in a perfect world.
A five-year cut?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's some spots we will not be able to cut.
So I guess my thought would be, why wouldn't it just say, here's the price is 461 to cut the whole system and just leave it at that instead of the annual makes it sound like we're getting in the contract and they're gonna, I didn't understand that part.
And I think maybe they put that in there just to show if we didn't get it finished, we can roll it over to the next year. But that's my understanding.
But that 461, that is the price to cut the whole system?
The whole system, yes.
So there's six, yeah, six systems and they did their-
That seems like a good deal to me.
It's a, I mean, yeah.
That don't sound that great to me.
That's a lot of, I mean, what's the mileage on something like that?
That's over 90, 90 overhead miles and that's distribution and your transmission.
Right.
Oh, 90 miles?
Over, yes, sir. That sounds like a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot of linear feet. So.
Unfortunately, some of these, some of these miles have not been trimmed.
In a while.
In a while.
So this is a question that I have.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Director, if you, are you picking and choosing this year? Like, would you do one C first? Would you do the higher amounts, the bigger jobs first?
Right off the bat, we would stick with a line of substation. Because that's, we've sort of went around and assessed which ones that need the most work.
So that's a big, that's right.
Yeah. We're doing it by outages, so, you know, after-hours calls, squirrels, wildlife, limbs. We're sort of doing it that way and putting prioritizing it.
That's what I was looking at. Yeah, so we do the bigger jobs first, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And this was a budgeted item?
It is, yes, sir.
In y'all's accounting and you're actually under that by $38,350,000, so. Great job, man. I have no problem with it. I just wanted to make sure people understood that cost fee because it was a little confusing. We do not have to pay the whole 461 if they don't do all of that work.
We don't have to pay the whole 461 and we don't have to let them trim the whole system.
You're doing the same thing I did. You come up with 97 cents a foot?
What's that?
Says you come up with 97 cents a foot?
No, I didn't run the number. Did you run it?
Yeah, I thought that's what you were gonna say. 97 cents a foot is a pretty good price.
That's a, that's an excellent price, especially in this day and time. So, anyway.
All I got. Any questions for me?
That's it, brother. God bless you. Thank you. Good job, Ben. My brother George.
What's happening?
All good, man.
I've got agenda item number 12. It is items for surplus. Got a list of the items attached.
Yeah, I saw that. Any questions about this? This is just our little auction, I believe, where we can make some money back on some of our equipment. Is that correct, George?
That is correct. Go up deals and then recycle some of it.
Right. All right. Sounds pretty cut and dry.
All right. And then I also have agenda item number 14, which is a truck that we put out for bid because we were having a hard time finding a truck to meet what we were looking for on a state bid list that didn't take a year to get here. And it is under budget. And they can have it within seven days of us getting the signed resolution.
We're picking it up and they deliver?
They'll deliver it to us.
All right. Right on. So y'all pretty much caught up with the trucks or no with this one?
That'll get us on trucks. We have one more excavator that we're gonna try to purchase that we're in the process of getting prices on it now.
All right. Very good. Very good. All right. Great job, man.
So full ton, 350?
It is, I think it's a bigger than a, I should say on here. It's one of those-
5,500.
Yeah, 5,500.
5,500, okay. I see it now.
The old Dakota trucks that you used to see, that's what it looks like now.
And is, any other parts that's gonna need to be attached or bought?
That should be out.
That should be it, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. Very good. Counsel, any other questions on this?
Looks like they got a vehicle Jimmy may be interested in, O2 Suburban.
It's too new for him.
On the Guff's list, yeah, I saw it. Wrong century.
Wrong century.
That Suburban, I think you had something wrong with it, though, I saw.
It's been around the block, I can tell you that much.
I think the motor might not work. Yeah, you need a project. Yeah, keep you busy. The girls don't keep you busy enough. All right, thank you, George.
And I also have agenda item number 15, which is our, it's the first time we're ever doing this, but a lot of our subdivisions like Summer Lake, Gafer Estates, Hollow Brook, all of them around 15 years old in the tree canopy, the street tree canopy is getting over not only on the sidewalks and causing it to where you can't walk on the sidewalks, but also our trucks, our sanitation trucks are having a hard time getting in and out of subdivisions without tearing stuff up, our street sweepers. So this is a, we budgeted $96,000, so that's why it's a not to exceed. So we put it out to bid to come through the subdivisions to try to help raise the canopy to try to get better pedestrian access on sidewalks and to keep from tearing our trucks up, running sanitation vehicles.
Then we met the budget and this was a budgeted project. Very good.
Yes, it was.
And you got like prioritization list or something?
Well, so Gafer Estates, Summer Lake and Hollow Brook are number, are top three that we're gonna go in. And then there's several of them. Some, Stone Creek, a couple of other ones that are in the same, same basic amount of years where the street trees are growing over. We have an active list on the board, though, I'll tell you that much. But those three that I named are the number one, especially Gafer Estates is like Pets Avenue. We can't even get a truck down there right now.
And the thing, these guys are, you know, one of the things that we had, we make sure that we had, they're, when they cut these trees, they know exactly what they're doing.
They have to, they have to have a certified arborist on site while they're working.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I'm tired. I'm having a moment. But horticulture is just the word I was looking for. Very good. All right. Very good. Is this for a three-year contract?
It's up to, yes, sir. If we, if we like them, we can, we can extend it on. And we can also do an extra year if we want.
And this, and that's the 96 annually?
That is what we have budgeted for this year. We kind of, Jamie and I sat down and kind of came up with an hourly rate for a typical tree man. And that's the numbers we came up with, the hours that we thought it was gonna take for them to do it and then put a little flux in it just to make sure in our budget.
Okay. So each year we would rethink that number?
Yes.
If we, okay.
Yes.
All right. All right. Counsel? All right, thank you. Inboard, George, you have it.
That's it.
All right. God bless you, my friend. Thank you, sir. Good job.
See, IT has three items on the agenda, number 16, 17, and 18. 16 is a renewal for software for short-term rental, short-term rental management software. $4,850. I think that would actually came in under budget. Yeah, I think, I think it was $6,000 that was budgeted. So that was, that was under budget.
Yeah, $149,000. $5,000 was the budget.
$5,000 was what it was.
And 149 less. But I think if we actually get these guys that we have as far as recognizing, locating the actual people that are ghost, and that's usually the problem. Even the people there, they have no idea who owns this property because they're kind of hidden.
Yeah.
And I talked to Greenwich a lot about this. We could recover over $100,000.
That's all.
Easy, you know. Fine. We talked about this years ago. And I talked to Greenwich's agnostium about this because we had a lot of money out there that we were getting duped on as far as this process of short-term rentals because they were not getting taxed appropriately as far as lodging taxes concerned. So I think this is a, my point is I think this is a great investment for $4,000 because the ROI is gonna be outstanding as far as that's concerned.
I agree. Okay. Any questions on 16?
16, that's got some issues. We sent back today to their counsel and we haven't heard back from them yet. So I think that may need to bump a month.
So push it off today?
Yeah. There's, there's one issue with that contract that's-
In the deeper?
Yeah.
With 17?
16, the one we're talking about now.
16.
Is it in their contract that we're negotiating? It's in their-
It's just some, some of the terms that they're trying to funnel us to.
I got you. Okay.
Marcus has got to put some properties in, some more LLCs before he can get to that.
He said, hey, John. Oh, man.
Just kidding.
We're kidding, in all God's name. All right.
So you say we should pull it?
Pull that today?
Yeah, it can just table it one time and then go. In your legal opinion, we ought to have an answer back from them before next time. That's correct.
So go through it and just table it or do you want to just-
Table it and that'll pump it to the next agenda and then we vote on it that time. I think it'll be fine.
All right. Either way, it'll pump to the next agenda. Yeah, so, okay. Sounds good. You want to go through the pulling of it or you want to just, I mean, the tabling of it? Is that, okay.
Or you can pull it off the agenda and just sit it back on. How do you want to do it?
Yeah, we'll just, yeah.
You gotta start, you gotta table it. You can just pull it right now.
We'll just pull it.
I say pull it, that's one less resolution to be made.
That way, we don't have to go through the minutia, you know. So, anyway, nobody's listening, Marcus.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So 17, historically, every three years, we've had to bid the phone system out. And the current bid that we have, we're on right now with Harbor, who's now CESPAR, ended. I was going to be, put this out for bid, but I, through contact at Foley, found out that these voice-over IP systems are on contract now. The price is pretty outstanding. The monthly cost is right around $3,064 where we're paying, I think we're at around $5,900 right now. I went ahead and got some more quotes. The quote that I got, the other quote that I got was like $6,000 a month. This is really good news for it to be on a contract because it's a lot of work to rip out a phone system and replace one every three years. I have to go to every desk and program these phones and it's, it's a lot of work. It's a big progress. So with this being on contract, hopefully, we can just renew the contract every three years and just keep rolling with it. I mean, a phone system's a phone system. It's just you pick up, you say hello. It's nothing really- I mean, a phone system's a phone system, it's just you pick up, you say hello, there's nothing really magical about them, um, once, once you get them set up. Uh, just really the big, the big thing is reliability and so that's, that's what we'll have to figure out with, uh, with this company, but I think it'll be good.
And you said, um, reference, this, this was referenced to you, meaning we knew somebody that was already using this particular product?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I've actually, and ambit, um, this, the, the, this, this company, we, when, I built a phone system many years ago that the city of Fairhope used for a while and they backed me up on that phone system, so we've had a relationship before, I know these guys and then they, they do good work. I'm real confident that it'll, it'll be, it'll be a good system that they're gonna be providing us.
Yeah, so there's a couple, and I, and I, and I called Jeff about it, there was a couple of price things on the, um, on the memorandum, guys. Um, you know, they had, the numbers weren't adding up to me, so I called Jeff to see what was going on. Um, that sixty-five-one-one-eight, that's if, only if we had a twelve-month, okay? And we only have six months in our fiscal, so that number should go down to forty-six-seven-two-nine-twenty-two. Jack, you can back, you can do the numbers yourself, um, and see, but that, that's more of the number that it should be, not that sixty-five-one-one-eight-forty-four, for this year. Now, next year, when you get a full fiscal, that should, that, that should be the number.
Yeah, so we've, we've gotta pay for the implementation costs in six months of service to make it till October. Then in October, we'll budget in the, uh, you know, thirty-seven thousand dollars a year to keep, keep the system going after that.
All right.
Any questions?
All right. Questions, concerns, issues, guys? Thank you, Jeff.
All right, number eighteen, um, we've got a two-thousand-six Trailblazer that we need to get rid of, it's past its prom. Um, and, um, we, we, we discussed internally to go ahead and see about getting an electric vehicle. Our department, we manage those charge point stations and to commit, and, and part of commissioning this station is you have to have an electric vehicle to commission it. And John, who's in my department in the back, has been using his personal vehicle to commission these things and I don't think we need to be doing that. Um, the, uh, we, we talked about it internally, different, different vehicles to look at. A lot of cities are buying the, uh, the Ford Lightnings, but those are just too expensive. Those are like eighty thousand dollars for a pickup truck that we don't need, we need an SUV. Uh, and so we, we kinda came upon that, the Ford, the Mustang Mach-E, which is, is, is not a Mustang, it's, it's, it's a, it's a five-door SUV crossover uh, that is about the same size as the Explorer that I have now.
It's sharp, man.
That answers one question I had.
I had a lot of questions.
It's sharp, man. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, when you picture Mustang, I pictured the sixty-five Mustang, yeah.
It's, yeah, dog, it's sharp.
The two-door sports car, the V-eight, the five-point-oh, you know? This isn't nothing like it, this is a, this is a crossover. And I, I think it was a mistake for them to use that name, I think it's actually hurt them, which is good for us, I think we got a good price.
Yeah, it was an excellent price.
Yeah.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven, right at thirty-seven?
Thirty-seven, yeah, yeah. It came under budget.
What kind of warranty does this vehicle, uh, have, three-year warranty?
Oh, jeez, look at that.
One question.
It's thirty-six months, I'm, I'm almost sure, Jack, if, if.
And who maintains it after that? Because we typically maintain our own fleet, but we're not gonna have anybody.
Well, I mean, the thing about electric vehicles, you change the brakes. I mean, there's not much to do with electric vehicles, along, I mean, you wanna, you gotta worry about the battery.
Yeah, John, you wanna speak on it a little bit? Can you do two things at once? Is there a lot of maintenance? What's the, what would that look like, um, cost-wise for, for the city, once we extend or expire with our thirty-six-month warranty? Since you're the guru.
Yeah, he is a guru, man.
Yeah.
So that, I'm sorry, my voice is about gone.
No worries.
That is federally mandated, electric vehicles have an eight-year, hundred-thousand-mile electric components warranty.
Okay.
So the battery, the electric motors, all the interconnections, that's warranted up to eight years and a hundred thousand miles.
Fully warranted?
Yes.
For eight years?
Yeah, the cooling systems and everything related to the electric drivetrain.
And that's a federal?
That's a federal thing, yeah, so all cars have to have at least that much of a warranty.
Awesome.
And then like Jeff said, as far as consumables, it's really brake pads, windshield wipers.
Right. And are those things normal, normalized on electric? There's no extra expenses with those things, they're not outstanding? Okay, well, man, I'm so ecstatic for you guys to be driving it.
One more question, you're replacing one vehicle with two vehicles?
The, the other vehicle is for the revenue department, uh.
Give me a little speed, that, that's, um.
Who drives into revenue? The, oh, the code enforcer?
Well, code enforcement's gonna get the Ford Explorer we currently have and then Natalie, who's our runner, who goes all around the city every single day to all departments, goes down to the marina, goes to the golf course, um, picks up the mail, so Natalie will be driving the electric vehicle around town and then the code enforcement will get the handy down.
She'll get to let her hair blow a little bit. I got you, okay? Drop top, all right. Feral, ballin'.
It's not, not, not a convertible. Four-door crossover.
Five-door, up to.
Five doors?
Five doors, you're right, you're right, the back, it does.
It's a hatch. But they're pretty, those are pretty good-looking cars, though, seriously, I, I looked it up, they're still nice-looking cars.
Yeah.
They're really cool, man, so.
I think, I think it'll be interesting to, to, to test out, um, you know, we've, we've gotta come up with, with solutions to put charging stations at the warehouse, uh, to be able to swipe our badge, to activate the stations, there's, there's a lot to learn.
All right, yeah, thank you, man, I was interested in, in hearing that explanation, so thank y'all.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions on that, counsel? All right, who's up next? So we have, let's see, Agenda Items, um, let's see, eight, which is an annexation, nine and ten. Six, we're pulling, guys, we're pulling six.
We're pulling six?
Yes, sir. Pulling six and, um, and then we have a five, which is a final adoption.
You pulling sixteen as well? Six and sixteen?
Six and sixteen and we're adding one. Number twenty-four, I don't know, twenty-four, all right, um, let's see. The final adoption is just, I can speak on that, that, that was something that we talked about as far as the meeting is concerned, is up for final adoption, um, as far as our policy and procedure goes. Who has, um, I guess Hunter, that number eight, you kinda spoke on that a little bit, this is one of the properties to just clean it up, right?
Yes, sir, I wanna give everybody an opportunity to annex into the city of Fairhope, so that'll extend our boundaries just a little bit more. Um, and then I also have item nine.
Okay.
Um, that's simple bond, um, everything is in order on that subdivision and ready to start their bond process.
Yes, this is for phase two? Right, yeah, phase six.
Phase six, yes, sir.
We did phase five earlier, okay. This is a two-year, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, two-year. All right, that's Hunter. And, um, and number ten, let me see.
So.
That's the warrant.
Yeah, that's the warrant, so, um.
Yeah.
As of right now, it's okay to go ahead and we can have it added on there to Webster, selecting Webster and then authorizing us to sign the term sheet. Is, that's what the agenda is, the action.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't here for that discussion, but I, I certainly thought that looked like the commonest bid letters.
Anybody have any heartburn as far as Webster, counsel, to actually identify Webster as our choice for that particular RFP?
That'll look good.
Okay, good, all right.
And then, um, just as an update, um, just for the public to know, is our audit was released last Friday, will be eighth, and it is on our webpage.
Say, say that one more.
Our financial audit for, um, fiscal year twenty-three is on our webpage and if, um, so if anybody asks y'all any questions on your audit, it is, it is there and y'all please take opportunity to, um, check it out also. And then the CPA firm will come back in May to do a presentation on it.
We have the same company, right? We kept the same company, okay. All right, I think that covers it all, guys.
Uh, twenty-two, I, I got a question, is this Pat here?
Let's see, did we do twenty-two? Who was here? Let's see, yeah, twenty-two and twenty-three. Market physicality study, Dr. Cat, yeah, twenty-two.
I, I'm, uh, a little perplexed by, by this number twenty-two, Pat, what, what, why do we need a market study as to, what are we trying to market down there?
Can I be honest? I did not, I did not request this.
Yep.
The Harbor Board requested a market feasibility to try to figure out what's the best utilization for the property down there, for the city.
So.
Or money-making deals or different items of that nature.
What, what, what options would we even consider? I mean, is there, is there anything we wanna consider? We talked about putting a boat storage there and that's about all I know of.
There are no, that I'm, that we're considering, it's just, we're looking at overall views.
Yeah, we're just, this is just a consultation.
And it's being paid for, which I've made sure that they understood. The city wasn't paying for us through their budget.
Yeah. So.
Well, they got their budget from the city, right? It's city money, they.
Well, they got their budget from the harbor itself, the harbor money, we made it, we, we put the money.
That's still income to the city.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it, it, it's, um, it's just a, a consultation to see exactly, supposedly, it's supposed to be specific to our demographic, specific to our, um, our citizenship and the things that we have around here as, 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 as far as the consultation is concerned.
But we didn't really drive it, I'm just, I'm just saying, what, what, if I was gonna ask you, what would you want down there? Would you have an answer to that?
Me?
Anybody?
Well, that's a part of it.
Anybody on the council?
Well, that's a part of it, because I would, I personally would be curious to see exactly what this young man, he's built lots of them. That's his deal around major Miami, different places, just to see what he has, um, you know, less than ten thousand dollars.
I can come up with a thousand ways to make money down there, that doesn't mean that I want them down there.
But we, this is just a consultation, you're right, we, we haven't voted to do anything.
Ten thousand dollars.
Except, except here.
This is something the board, the Harbor Board, they're wondering about the same thing, about what's the best way to utilize the property.
So.
So they came up with this idea.
It's just information. I'll see it. Pat, you got anything? Did we cover it all?
Yes, I, I, I know that this was brought up before the Harbor Board, they did not vote on it either way.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
This is where we are, but I did not request this.
Okay. Why made the agenda? Any other questions on that?
I'll wait until it comes up.
All right, all right, number twen, who has twenty-three? Um, I think, uh, this is pretty straightforward, um, Mrs. Spain, she's, does track long distance and I think they're doing their, a Trailblazers event on Utopia. And I think Chief, uh, nobody, Chief, anybody, I think we'll be fine, I'm, I'm sure they vetted it. Is anybody here from the police department? Nope. All right, well, when they come back, we'll ask about that, when we come back, gotta be Chief. Or Page. All right, guys, what time is it? Five-thirty-six, all right, we'll see y'all back here at six o'clock.